All right, are we good? You okay, Tasha? All right. It is 6:03. I will call to order the October 1st meeting of the Amity City Council. Please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tasha, will you take a role for us, please?
President. Rachel Walco.
President. Chad Bussler.
He will be absent tonight.
Kellin Shields.
Absent.
Here.
Here. We will start this evening with the consent agenda. We have the budget versus actuels and the regular city council meeting minutes from September. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We'll move on to citizen comments or questions. This is an opportunity to present items not on the regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We have the Yamhill County Sheriff's Office report within our packet. I don't see a DIG representative this evening. Do we have anyone here in the audience with a comment or question? All right, seeing none. Don't think we have anyone with us online.
No one's online.
Okay. We'll move into old business, of which we have none, and into new business. Our first item is the DLCD Technical Assistance Grant. Nathan, would you mind on each of these items just running through the background?
That one's dead.
This one's dead.
Yeah.
This one stays on for like 10 seconds.
If that, that's a...
Pausing business for a battery switch? I feel like it is a much better audience experience and recording experience if we all have working microphones. So, thank you for your patience.
Much better for the recording, I can tell you that. Thank you for your patience. Let me... Yes, so the Technical Assistance Grant through DLCD, this is something they... Well, they have a range of what they call community development grants. Basically, they're for technical assistance though, and it can be arranged... It can be for a range of different things, usually related to helping smaller cities, and sometimes bigger cities too, right, with specific projects. But usually helping smaller cities or jurisdictions implement planning requirements from the state, implement code and development changes. There's a lot of things that start being required from the state when your city hits a population of like 2,500, and then again at 5,000, again at 10,000. And so, a lot of it's helping those cities because they get just big enough to start kicking in some of the requirements, but not quite big enough that they've dealt with them in the past. And so, a lot of it's helping cities in those situations. In 2023, by a recommendation from our regional representative at DLCD, Melissa Erins, I submitted an application for a Technical Assistance Grant to help us update our comprehensive plan. That grant was approved and awarded and helped us kind of through a phase one. We, you know, did a lot of community outreach, discussed the comp plan with the community, and really tried to get some of those... Get some of those changes into a written document that outlined goals and policies. We talked about that at the previous work session, that final draft. What this grant application would do would be to essentially work towards the next step or the next phase of that project. There's still some things like mapping that can be done. There's some, what they call factual basis work, right, where we can work to actually map out natural hazards, slopes, floodplain. We have some of those already, but, right, getting all of those resources gathered together, put together specifically for Amity, depending on the grant amount, possibly things like a local wetland inventory, although probably not, at least in the size of scope that DLCD would recommend for this grant. Our regional rep recommended that I apply for approximately the same amount as we got for the comp plan update, and that was about $63,000 to $65,000. And with that, I think we would have sufficient resources to really work through some of that GIS integration, get a strong comp plan or a comp map, a zoning map, and then really take a deep dive into our development code and make sure that it's applying the things that we talked about in the comprehensive plan.
And then the resolution mentions it, but what is the local match requirement?
There is no local match requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why the resolution says we have sufficient, because there is no requirement.
Okay, great. Any questions on the grant application itself or the resolution of support from the council?
Seems like a good way to move forward.
Why are maps the next step instead of like updating the development code?
I think the next step could include both. But the reason I mentioned maps, a big portion of the comprehensive plan and one that DLCD really wants to see and to make sure that we get it right, is what they call that factual basis. Basically, that's making sure that all of the data we're looking at is lined up correctly. And so, when we talk about natural hazards, we know exactly where those are, what properties they're affecting. Really, it's meant to give us a better understanding of what actually needs to be done with the development code. Because if we don't have any properties affected by, you know, high slopes or if they're not as severe of a slope as we might have thought, right? Like, we say, oh yeah, that corner of town, really hilly. But when it's actually mapped out, maybe it's at a 7% slope. Looks pretty steep compared to most of Amity, which is flat. But then, code language would... 7% would fall into a specific kind of structural recommendations, right? And so, DLCD really focuses on and pushes that factual basis. And so, that's why I mentioned maps. I think a grant of 60,000 plus would pretty easily put us in the range to gather any maps, especially if we're not creating new things like the local wetland inventory. If it's just gathering and implementing maps that are already there, maybe updating the comprehensive plan map, and then looking at or updating the zoning map as well. But really, those maps are how we come together and make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
And then, a follow-up clarifying question. Would these maps be part of the comprehensive plan? And is that why they're the next step? Because they would actually, like, we would... We'll get a draft, we'll approve it, the state will approve it, but then as these maps are made, as we get them, we will put them in almost as amendments or additions to that comprehensive plan?
Yes.
So, the way I'm seeing is, it's still building that foundation which the development code stems from?
Yes. The... If you look at the 1979 existing, it has a few maps in the comp plan. And then it also frequently references a planning atlas, which I don't know if I have in paper. At least it doesn't show up as frequently as the comp plan does. It's not as easily available in my office. Might have it somewhere, probably have it somewhere. But basically, it's a bunch of maps. And so, you can have them, you know, directly input in. You can have an appendix. You can have... You can have it done a few different ways, but yeah, it's maps on natural hazards, like we talked about, floodplains, but also things like conservation areas, certain habitats. They included soil, soil mapping, right? Where are wet soils? Where are the soils that are good for agriculture around the city?
And could that be a place where we designated open space that we wanted to conserve?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The comp plan map would be a place to designate things like that.
Are you... You're only able to do that if it's city-owned land, right? Open space. My brain's not firing today.
I mean, if you were going to put restrictions on it, yes. And then otherwise, it would just fall to the zoning overlay, whatever, wherever it falls. Any other questions or any concerns with supporting the grant application? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-14, a resolution authorizing the city's application for DLCD's Technical Assistance Grant program.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-14, a resolution authorizing the city's application for DLCD's Technical Assistance Grant program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Our next item of new business is DLCD Community Green Infrastructure Grants. We have some background and supporting documentation here, but Nathan, I'll also ask you to just give us a quick rundown.
Yeah, this is very similar vein as the previous grant, but also a little bit different and kind of comes with an interesting question that I'd like the council to at least think about and consider as we talk about this. The DLCD puts on a grant program called the Community Green Infrastructure Grant Program. It's supporting projects that bring green infrastructure into Oregon communities, including planting large trees, planting storm or rain... Rain and drought tolerant plants, right, that will do well in the winter, soak up tons of rain, and then not need maintenance during the summer, essentially. And I think this is an excellent opportunity to address one of the major challenges facing the city's Oak Street project. On that project, we're currently planning for several storm swales along either side of the road, plantar strips essentially, that would take some of this storm water. Unfortunately, however, our soil is not great, and so the water infiltration in those areas is really, really slow. So even with swales up and down the street on both sides, we still have to have, according to the engineers and according to the city's stormwater standards, I should say, we're still going to need an underground piping, you know, stormwater pipe system with catch basins. And we need somewhere for that water to then go. Their current proposal is to create like a small pond next to the city's lift station on Oak Street. It's a little blue building with a blue fence around it. The city's property there extends to the south. You could probably essentially put another lift station on there. That's about how big the entire property is. And so, it's not huge, but we have room there for a small pond that we could direct all of the storm water to, that would hopefully slow it down, and then, you know, treat it, let some of the solids and pollution settle out, and then hopefully have storm water that's cleaner flowing down to Ash Swale. There's a major stormwater pipe that flows under the bowl, the lower green field between Oak Street and the old middle school. And we're looking at, you know, what would it take to tie into it? I know the existing pipe is likely undersized for the amount of storm water that we'd be adding to it. It's also... It at least struggled this last winter. We got a couple of calls after a heavy rain, it would start bubbling out in the field. Likely a break or a clog. We're working on that. And our plan... It was going to be Monday, so I was going to have the results already, but it got shifted to tomorrow. We're having ORVAC come out and camera that pipe, you know, jet it, clean it out first, but then also camera it and see, you know, is it a break right there in the middle of the field? Is it a clog down at the end by Ash Swale that we just need to clear? What's going on with it? And what size? What condition is it in? Anyway, there's a few questions around that stormwater facility. It currently handles stormwater... There's four catch basins there at Oak and Church. Handles a lot of that stormwater, and then I'm not sure if it comes from somewhere else as well. I think to the north, towards Nursery Street, there might be a couple of pipes that tie into it. But it's not a ton, so there may be room in that pipe to handle the existing stormwater and what we would be adding to it. However, I've also... I've learned that the bowl is not going to be used for sports or for the middle school necessarily anymore. With the stormwater that flows through there and it being... I'd need to look at the map again, but I believe it's down in the floodplain. It definitely gets lower and is a lot more wet during the winter. So it's not as conducive to like residential development down in there. And so, my idea anyway was that we could essentially daylight that stormwater pipe in that field and drain it through a rain garden filled with native plants and trees that would assist in treating, slowing, and cooling that stormwater. A large regional stormwater facility like this could handle additional stormwater from other areas or up on Nursery, right? If we redirected some of that to go south instead of out to trade. And that kind of facility would be a prime candidate for their Community Green Infrastructure Grant program. And so, I've broached the idea with the school district. Whether or not they would be willing to part with the land or to provide an easement, I'm not sure. Also not sure entirely what would be needed necessarily. We could probably focus most of the rain garden infrastructure down at the end towards the Ash Swale. The property lines are really weird down there. The city actually has some right-of-way that extends up to that. I should have included a map. Oh, I did include a map. And you can see on that Exhibit A, the first picture is a small map. The area that I am kind of anticipating this facility would be in would be in that green circle, but maybe even a little bit to the southwest. And then, if you look closely, there you can see a rectangle that extends from Oak Street to the west until you get basically that southwest corner of the circle, and then extends to the north as well, up to the middle school. That rectangle or that kind of rectangular extension is all city right-of-way from when I believe we anticipated that those roads would go through and connect.
And then, tax lot 04401, is that our...
Yes, 04401, that's the Oak Street Lift Station.
Lift Station.
So you can see that there's a good amount of room there next to it. It would take up basically access to the field from Oak Street if we put a pond there. Or at least block some of it, right? No, I think there would still be some room for access, but...
Could you describe approximately where the stormwater line runs now? I mean, I'm guessing, right, it runs through the diameter of that oval-ish?
Yeah.
But where does it come in from?
That is a good question.
Oak Street.
So I know that the... And that's what we're hoping to identify when we camera. We're going to have, you know, Clint either mark it with flags or take pictures as we go, kind of thing. You can see kind of a darker green line. I believe it almost sits in that green line.
Oh, okay, because that's where it's leaking?
Wouldn't surprise me, but also because it's the lowest point.
Yeah.
And I know that the lift station has an overflow pipe that connects into that stormwater drain. Basically, if our lift station ever overflowed or flooded, it would go into that drain instead of hopefully into people's houses, is the purpose of that overflow. But I... Other than knowing that it connects right there, I don't know if it... It's not clear if it starts from there or what's drawn on our Stormwater Master Plan map from 2002 is more of a line that comes... It's kind of cut off in my picture, but you can see there's two houses, starting on the right-hand side or the eastern side, starting from Oak Street. There's two houses, and then there's a little gap before the third and fourth house. In that little gap, that's kind of the lowest point in that area.
On Church Street.
Yes, on Church Street. And that, from there, is where the line is drawn in our 2002 stormwater map. Not sure how accurate that is or...
But wherever the current stormwater line lies, we have a utility easement.
Would be my assumption. It would take some work to find it, but, well, I don't know. When they survey, they tend to know how to find those things, so...
So I guess the question before the council tonight, we have a resolution in support, but really, it's just broaching this idea in general of we'll have more stormwater. There's a tentative plan right now, and this is a different opportunity. So maybe just getting some feedback on what you all think.
I like the idea of the opportunity. I feel like there's a lot of questions to answer before we know if that's even available to us.
It's true.
I'm not opposed to saying like, if all the stars align, let's go for it. But it feels like it may be too soon to go for it.
And I... From my experience, when you are to apply for the grant, they want to know...
You need to know some things.
Well, no, I was actually going to say the opposite in this, is that this is our idea, this is the scope we're working with, this is what we hope to accomplish, and there's steps along the way to say, well, we found this out, that's going to change. But you can write the project's scope in such a way that as long as you can fulfill that, like, we will treat this stormwater in a way which is, you know, better. It's green, green infrastructure, as long as we can keep that, the moving parts can have time to fall into place.
And I think also if... There's also questions that people aren't necessarily going to feel pressured to answer unless the city received an award, right, that said, hey, we have $400,000, right, to be able to build this facility. Can we do it, right?
But as of now, we're not in a jam. There is a plan, but it's just exploring.
That area that's by the existing pump station, it's hilled though, right? And when you talk about a rain catch basin or the rain garden native plant, is it... I'm trying to picture it, is it like on Alpine Street in Mclembeville where it has the big pits where there's plants planted and trees? Or is it more of just a planting?
I think it can kind of look a few different ways. I included a few more pictures down below in that Exhibit A. And some of them are just, you know, trees planted basically in a storm ditch. Others are a little... Well, I guess I didn't include that many pictures, just a couple of pictures. Some of them are more elaborate, like pits. I don't know for sure what would be recommended here. If it's just as simple as, you know, find the elevation where that storm line can come up to the surface, and then you just kind of drain it into an open area with trees and other plants that are going to drink up the stormwater. Or if it's... If it's a little different and you, you know, create like a lined basin area, right, that holds the water but allows plants to still deal with it. I'm not sure what the best approach is going to be.
And personally, I would be in support of exploring other options like the rain garden or the daylighting it out into the field. And to be perfectly honest, when Nathan first told me, well, the plan as of... It didn't really even have to do with this green infrastructure at all. He said, "The plan right now for Oak Street is it'll be collected in this big pond next to Lift Station." I said, "I don't want a pond." Like, I don't want a big concrete container of just water sitting there. I would rather have something else. If that's what needs to be done, I understand. But I just feel like there are ways that would be better for the environment, better aesthetically, less safety concerns than just having a big, potentially standing body of water next to the road. Counselor Rachel Walco, anything?
I always love these kind of green solutions to things like that, like stormwater, because they just... They kind of work better than human solutions a lot of the time. Like, the plants provide a lot more than just taking in water. They provide, like, the cooling and things like that. That's really important to maintain the health of the bodies of water that that stormwater is going to go into. Even just having the shade of trees is really beneficial. And they'll be able to take in some of the nutrients and other pollutants before they actually reach the swell. And it provides like habitat for amphibians and grazing for deer. And just, it's more than just catching our runoff. It really lifts up the area a little bit, I think. And plants are very efficient at dealing with water. It's what they do. And they also... And, and they also, I mean, in, in a bowl-like thing, it wouldn't really be that much of a problem with like landslides or anything, but they protect against erosion and, and further loss of, of soil and stuff like that. So I think anytime we can make use of the efficiency and the mechanics of plant life, I think that's amazing.
Counselor Michael Blanco?
She, she mostly said it all as far as I'm concerned, yeah. Natural solutions like this are, they automatically renew themselves. And one of the big things they do, if we get the right kind of plants in there, is that they purify the soil and the water as it passes through. It's a whole nother filtration system, which can only help.
So I'm not hearing any opposition to the application. And like any grant submission, it's not a given that we would be awarded. I heard you though mention a number, four hundred thousand dollars. Is that the realm of size of project we're talking?
So I would need some, I'll need to talk with some people and get some consultation numbers. The grant can go from, the grant scales from, I mean, anywhere from, I think fifty to a hundred thousand, up to five hundred thousand.
Okay.
So the grant could go that high, could, could go four hundred, five hundred thousand. I don't know. Again, like I said, I don't know what would be recommended there. If it's going to take a lot of construction or if it's as simple as bringing that pipe up to surface, possibly running a new pipe, but just through the bowl area, right? I, and then having it drop off. It, I will also say, if we can use some green infrastructure funding to fund other pieces of the Oak Street stormwater, that could help alleviate that project somewhat. But I would need to look more at our current plans for that and what could be, what could qualify. Really, my focus would be on getting this kind of regional stormwater infrastructure piece accomplished, so.
And just a little bit of advice that I learned very early on when joining council is there was an opportunity I found for a two million dollar grant. And I brought it to the council meeting and I said, I don't know if we should ask for the whole two million dollars. Like, I don't know if we can come up with enough project to spend two million dollars. And overwhelmingly, everyone told me, let's just ask for the two million. Like, we, we can find work to do and we got it. And that was our reservoir in Goucher Street project. So if there's five hundred thousand available and you feel like we could put that to use in the city, I don't see any reason to shoot low.
Yeah, we can find green infrastructure.
So seeing that, I heard no opposition. Before me, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash fifteen?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
Fourteen. Oh.
Right, I thought the other one was fourteen.
The other one was fourteen, this one's fifteen.
Okay.
It just didn't get changed.
Okay, great. A resolution authorizing the city's application for DL, for, hang on. For DLCD's Community Grant Infrastructure, Community Green Infrastructure Grant Program. Here we go.
All right, I have a motion and a second for resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing the city's application for DLCD's Community Green Infrastructure Grant Program. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. That was the extent of our new business for the evening. We'll move on to department reports and we'll start out with our city administrator. We have a report in the pocket and is there anything you'd like to add, Nathan?
Shoot, I almost, I just had a thought. Not too much. The, the reservoir cleaning went well. There were a few minor repairs that we made. Overall, we found less dirt in the reservoir than we anticipated. So that's always a good sign. But.
Hello? Go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, not, not too much else to add. The water treatment plant is moving along. It, there was a, a bit of a setback when the contractor realized that there were some pieces that hadn't been ordered, some, like a flow meter and some other analysis pieces that they, I, I believe they had included them in their original bid, but they just hadn't ordered them. And so they didn't have them currently. And they're needed for, to get train one up and running. So they're working on that, but we don't yet know how long of a lead time some of those have. Hopefully it's not too long. Other than that, I, I really don't have much else. Oh, other than, I included the look ahead section. I don't know if anybody was able to see it, but I, if that's helpful, I can certainly do that more too, because I, I, sometimes it's hard for me to get to the end of the month. I tend to be very forward looking. So I get to the end of the month and I sometimes have a hard time even remembering what happened. But looking ahead is a little easier for me. And, and if it's helpful, especially if it's helpful to coordinate things, I know Mayor King is usually good about mentioning just about all of these in, in her, in her reports. But I can have them written here as well and, and add some of these.
I like having the dates ahead of the meeting so that I can already have like looked at my calendar and done my.
I welcome you to give any look ahead.
Perfect.
Are able.
I'll, I'll try to keep that and just kind of let people know major things I'm anticipating for the upcoming month, so.
And then I want to ask, so you also did the look ahead for the October work session, but did council have any other topics that they want to see at either the next work session or one that's coming up in the near future? I know that there's always a lot going on, a lot up in the air. So if there's anything you feel like we haven't gotten around to in a timely manner or need to check back in on now or when you think of it, just let Nathan know and we'll get it into a work session.
And that will be also at six?
Yes. All work sessions and regular council meetings, six P M. Okay. Any questions for the city administrator? All right, we'll move on to the monthly report from our city recorder and treasurer. Anything to add, Tasha?
Yeah, just so just reminder of the cleanup on the eleventh and are you, are you going to have?
I've got a cup, I've got some kids and I think I should be able to make it.
Okay.
Do, I need to get waivers for the kids?
Probably would be a good idea.
Okay, so I'll come.
Yes.
Buy it, I have a receipt to bring you tomorrow, so I'll come settle up and, yeah.
I will not be at work tomorrow.
I will come see you on Friday.
Monday.
No, Monday, okay. I'll come in tomorrow for waivers.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to print some and have them, or at least email them to Mona to get printed.
Great, or email, can you email them to me? I can.
Oh, not me.
I think so. Let me find them, but, yeah.
And then the harvest party is the twentieth as well. So I'll be, from, it, the event's from one to three. So if you can help, maybe be in here at twelve thirty and then I'll be at twelve thirty thirty. We'll have our low stations and.
Yeah, I should be able to do that. Yeah, do you, you want kids for that one too? Okay.
Okay, so for citywide cleanup that was mentioned, I just want to check in and see who will be able to be there. You said yes, you will be gone. Are either of you available to help with the citywide cleanup?
What is that?
That is where we'll be at the elementary school.
Rebel Quinn?
The eleventh? Saturday, the eleventh.
I'm working.
Okay.
Saturday morning, I'll be there.
Okay.
Hmm?
Do you need a porta potty?
If available.
Oh.
I can organize it.
If it's not a problem, it'd be appreciated.
I know.
Okay.
Because I know both public works staff will be there as well.
Okay. I just, one at a time, I just want to make sure we get that filled up. But it sounds like we'll have three staff, at least three counselors or two counselors and myself, yeah.
Students too, yeah.
Okay, and some students, we should be good.
And we have enough vests for everybody?
Let me confirm, but we will.
Okay.
I'll bring, they need to be.
It's always nice to have.
I need to bring gloves.
Yes.
Yes, gloves.
Yes, vests and gloves.
And then we will check in on the harvest party at?
Work session.
Work session.
Yep.
Yes.
You're on everyone's radar.
Great, thank you.
Oh, and then, yeah, and then we'll talk at work session too, but usually the day before is nice to have help setting up.
And that'd be Friday, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, or actually probably, let's do the twenty-third since I will.
Okay. Thursday, twenty-third for setup, okay. And I have had at least one person I can think of that reached out directly to me and asked for volunteer opportunities. So I will share this information and I'll CC you just so she is in the loop and you have that contacted info. Okay. We've heard about Public Works, is there anything else? Public Works related that should be reported on? Within your report was that we have a new Public Works manager?
Yes, yes. Clint is our new Public Works manager. He's been doing great, but also there are still only two people, so they, they've been a bit short. They, we're working through, we, on Monday of this week, we reviewed the applications that we had for that open position and set up some interviews. We have interviews set up for next week, so hoping to move pretty quickly and get our third person hired again, so. And back up to, to at least our normal capacity, so.
Great. We saw the library report come through, the engineer billing report, attorney and planning planner billing report. Any questions, comments or concerns there? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to business from the mayor and city councillors. And we'll start with council president, Melissa Horcas.
I think it's worth mentioning that our library, even though it's a small staff and have some outages, have been hard at work and they got the cultural passes back. So there's Evergreen Museum, Northwest Parks, Oregon Garden and Gilbert House. That's the kind of four that we usually have, but they also got two new passes this year to add that you can check out. And it's the Haley Ford Museum of Art and the Willamette Heritage Center that are in St. Louis. So those are great additions and nice things to know that the library offers.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Thompson?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Rachel Blanco?
Nothing.
And Counselor Michael Blanco?
Nothing.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of touch base on the decorating contest that we have held the last three years. So at the harvest party, we give out pumpkins to anyone who attends. And then in the days leading up to the end of the month, historically council has went out, I will make maps with different jurisdictions plotted out. And you pick your favorite pumpkin, Jack Lannard decorated pumpkin. And we announce winners and they get a little sweet treat reward. You know, we always ask permission, but we'll post a picture on the Facebook page. I think that's kind of fun. So my plan was to kind of facilitate that. Again, I just want to make sure there was some interest from council.
Yes.
Okay. Great, I love it. I also don't want to be the only one doing it.
It's a lot of weather.
Okay, yes. I have, I have. The weather can be precarious, but. And then, so we'll also talk details of that at the work session. I just wanted to thank Nathan and Clint for the water treatment plant tour. That was pretty great for wastewater, yeah. We had some community members come. We also had some people that work in other wastewater facilities around that were just super interested to see how ours worked and what we were up to. And so like I said that day, every time I go down there, I learn more about how it works and also what we need. So I would encourage, if there's any councillors that are interested, I know Nathan would probably be willing to give, you know, a personal tour or we can plan another community tour. Because I think with a little more notice, we could get more people.
Certainly planning to.
I think it was well worth the time. And then I just wanted to mention that I, along with Nathan, will be at the League of Oregon Cities Conference starting tomorrow. So that's pretty fun, once a year meetup. I think they said there's going to be over a hundred and forty some of the two hundred and forty mayors and other elected officials there. So it's a good networking and I know at least as far as the learning and training sessions that they offer, my day is packed from seven A M. tomorrow till six fifteen at night. And it's three days of fun like that, so. If it sound, and I'll come and report back, but if it sounds like something in the future you'd be interested, I recommend everyone trying out these conferences. There's a spring conference, there's the annual conference, there's different trainings available. Initially, it was far out of my comfort zone, but once you go and you see that you're just sitting in classes and meeting nice people, it's, I would say it's a really good growth opportunity for anyone in these positions. And the city budget supports us. So if you have interest in availability, reach out to staff and ask about opportunities or I will try to bring those to council. And that's all I have. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a final motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed adjournment? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at six fifty-one.